Could I ask Clerk Segrist to call the roll?
Trustee Anthony.
President.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I'm here.
Supervisor Williams.
Hello.
All right.
Call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We've got one, a call for a motion to approve a single set of minutes from the January 8, 2019 meeting.
So moved.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now would be the time in our agenda for any citizens' non-agenda items. If you're here to speak to anything that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to speak. Is there any non-agenda items? Seeing none, Treasurer Slavens, could we have a motion to pay the bills?
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
In favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now if Clerk Segrist could read the consent calendar as a single motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as written with appointment and reappointments to the Canton Tax Board of Review, and that is for Charles Tenbrock, Lois Beerbaum, Elizabeth Manuel, Anthony Rosati as reappointments, and Paul Talwar as a new appointment. Additionally, Item C2, consider reappointment to the Commission for Culture, Arts, and Heritage of Sharon Dillenbach. It's a reappointment. And Item C3, consider approval of budget amendments for the block program.
Second. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Paul. We appreciate your service, sir. Moving on now to the general calendar, Item G1, first item. Site plan for Alrigg Fast Food Establishment.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Charter Township of Canton for the site plan for Alrigg Fast Food Restaurant. Whereas, the project sponsor, Mr. Brian Amon, has requested site plan approval for the Alrigg Fast Food Restaurant to be located on Ford Road between Sheldon and Canton Center Roads identified as the tax parcel listed, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the site plan and made a recommendation to approve the request to grant site plan approval, including modifications to planting bed widths, parking lot peninsula widths, and size of the proposed loading zone, as summarized in the attached written analysis and recommendation. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request of the petitioner, Mr. Brian Amon, to approve the site plan for the proposed Alrigg Fast Food Restaurant, subject to any and all state and local development regulations, and further subject to any conditions recommended by the Planning Commission and staff, as described in the analysis and recommendation attached hereto and made a part hereof.
Good.
And in summary, the motion itself kind of tells us the whole story there. It's a new restaurant with drive-through going into where Elite iCare is today. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of the modifications to the size and site, and the applicant's effort to satisfy the intent of the ordinances. Brian, could you tell us a little bit about what's physically going to go there? Is it a juice?
Mr. Supervisor, first, thank you, Brian Amon, on behalf of the applicant. I first want to recognize, Danny, that's the best pledge of allegiance I've ever heard at this Board of Trustees, so thank you for that. So, yeah. I'm sure there's a badge in it for him, and I hope there is. So, anyway, so, yeah. Yes, so the proposed use is a Smoothie King. It'll be the first in the Midwest, well, the first in Michigan. They have some in Illinois, and they're just opening in Indiana. Otherwise, they're in South Korea and all kinds of other places around the globe. It is a, I'm sorry, a healthy alternative of a fruit smoothie drink, which I'll have to be convinced to go try, but, because if it's not McDonald's, you know, I'll take my chances. But, yeah, we really expect it to be really a great improvement. I think it'll be a great alternative for Canton residents, and we're confident that if approved by this board, within no time, on the community page, people will be trash-talking their service and their product in no time. I'm sorry, for those who are on the community page, you'll understand that. So, yeah.
Are there any board questions, comments?
Who actually owns that property?
So, it's currently owned by the optometrist that's there. It's being purchased by Alrigg for the development. They will own it and do a ground lease with Smoothie King, but it's a long-term lease on this. They intend this to be their first restaurant opened in Michigan. They will be closely followed by another one in Livonia, which we've been working diligently on as well. It's really, I think for the townships' purposes, it's one of the last older buildings under the old architecture that we've seen along Ford Road in there, so, yeah.
Big concern, I mean, we talked about the line again with ten and no escape clause with people with kids, but Mr. Brian said that we'll be through each order in two minutes.
Yeah, they really, it's not, it's kind of hard to understand and appreciate compared to some of the other users, two doors over is McDonald's and a few doors or other faster food operations. This is more of a fast casual operation. They do no more than 300 customers in a day, so when you break that down to the hourly use, it's just not that dominant. Although we, by ordinance, are required to show 10 cars in the stacking aisle, the day that they get 10 cars, they'll be coming to us for a new site, because it'll be a great achievement on their part to get to that number, so, yeah.
And in terms of the aesthetics, because Elite is not that attractive of a building today.
Yeah, yeah, so, and Elite Optometry is certainly one of our older buildings, and I have been having fits with the architect, because quite frankly, his depictions don't do justice to the materials. And they brought a material board, and I think they showed a whole square inch of the brick material itself. It was so impressive to have a square inch of the brick material at the meeting, but I think it'll actually show, and part of this, the design, is what we've seen in other buildings along Ford Road. By design, their colors and their architecture, they're trying to kind of stand out a little bit, certainly within ordinance, certainly meets all the masonry requirements and all the other stuff like that. But we're not used to seeing kind of a gray-based building, except the new National Coney Island and a few other buildings are pretty similar to that, so if you think about National Coney Island, you're going to look at this and say, wow, wow, it looks a little bit like that. So in terms of the hues and colors, we're used to more of a green-filled village, you know, red-brick-based approach to a lot of things, and this is kind of that departure in the other direction, so.
Saying no further questions, comments. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Item G2, consider first reading of an amendment to the Appendix A zoning code of ordinances for the Krupp-Cassellou family trust rezoning.
It's in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of the proposed amendment to Appendix A zoning of the code of ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton, as provided in the attached ordinance which rezones the subject parcel listed from RR, or Rural Residential, Rural Agricultural District to R1, Single Family Residential District.
The applicant is proposing to rezone property from Rural Residential to R1, in line with the master plan. It's a single-family residential district. The property will be combined with several other parcels near the northwest corner of Ridge and Warren Roads for potential low-density residential development. The land request is consistent with the surrounding zoning, future land use designation on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, and based on conversations I've had with our planning manager, Mr. Goulet, that property, if you look at that corner today, is not attractive, and it's, will be made to be attractive once it's completed, from an aesthetically pleasing, natural beauty road perspective. So, looking forward to that corner being cleaned up as well. Any board questions? Yes, Stephen.
Thank you. Jeff, the other parcels, will they go all the way to that corner?
Yes, it includes, if you remember, the church parcel on the corner, and then there's a parcel just to the north of it that had a private road on it. So those two parcels, along with this parcel that has a little bit of frontage on Ridge Road, will be combined into about a 35-acre piece for something similar to what you see with Stone Ridge, or currently what's going on in West Berry there at Onjoy Road.
Those are all R1 to the south, outside of the R.
So this is kind of a donut hole of RR that's there, because the Krupp family owned it. I think the Krupp family was instrumental, and one of the families instrumental in getting the Natural Beauty Road designation 25 years ago.
So, it will go to the street even, they own the property in front to Ridge Road.
Right, so the property to the south of it will bring the road out to Ridge Road.
I see. And then finally, the, I didn't, I'm looking at a map, I don't have the Planning Commission minutes, but there was talk of, like, grouping the homes or something? How does that work?
Yeah, most of what we see in the R1 district, most people don't want one-acre parcels. There's a lot of natural features on the property, so what they'll do is they'll probably cluster smaller, you know, good-sized lots, but, you know, try to preserve all the open space, all the wetlands, all of the trees on the property, and open space areas, and cluster the homes around them, and try to preserve all of that natural area.
They have to at least have one-third acre lots on that side of town?
That'll be done as part of a planned development when they bring it in, so that'll be up to you to determine, you know, whether the size of lot is appropriate. I mean, we've got subdivisions, we've got Hampton Ridge to the west, and we've got the subdivision to the east, which are all clustered developments, so.
Thank you.
So on this, there were a lot of residents there. If you see the notes, a lot of people came, a lot of it was, had to be education of the residents. You know, we put up the master plan, and we showed them the zoning around, and that, you know, as you can see, as Jeff put up the subject property, and so people were surprised by that, but we talked to them about the process of how it changed, and they had, they could have come in to have input. And also, the big thing was keeping it a natural beauty road. A lot of them didn't think you could keep it a natural beauty road. And also stressed working with the developers on, you know, giving input, so we stressed that they should work with the residents, and the residents could have input. And one resident did stand up and say he had done that before, and they were successful, and he says, this might even end up better, you know, looking better than it does, so.
I believe that will happen here. Are there any residents here that would like to make comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Diane, please, yeah.
Jeff, and can you go over a little bit the Natural Beauty Road, just, you know, if they do?
Yeah, about 25 years ago, a group of residents in the northwest Canton homeowners volunteer group basically did an inventory and went to the county and provide justification for designation of certain segments of roads in the northwest part of the township as Natural Beauty Road segments. And what that does, it provides a level of protection to the road, especially when it comes to tree and vegetation removal within the right-of-way. So, when any work is done within that road, whether it's utility work, whether or not it's a new driveway coming through, whether it's a road coming through, Wayne County has to take, you know, you know, they have to look at what's reasonable before they just say, clear-cut the right-of-way. So, in many cases, we can get enhancements to the Natural Beauty Road. In this particular case, there's not a whole lot of vegetation in the right-of-way, there's a few trees. In this particular case, we could get enhancements to the Natural Beauty Road. There are some that believe that the Natural Beauty Road can't be paved, you know, we'll look at a traffic analysis, determine what the justification is for paving or not paving this road. Generally, we try to keep Natural Beauty Roads unpaved. That's not necessarily an ordinance requirement that it stays unpaved, but the big issue is maintaining the rural atmosphere and maintaining the vegetation within the right-of-way.
Okay, and where I was going, and I didn't see, are there any residential, anybody from the area that would like to comment? We have representatives here from Polte, please, if you'd like to. Sir, did you want to make comment?
I do, but I will say that the constituents here are very hard to meet here.
Okay.
People are saying, now you know you've been saying some things, and I would like to make a comment.
Okay, very good, sir. Now would be the time to do that, so if we could, sir, I apologize. We're going to turn the volume up a little bit, so we make sure you hear us from here on out.
I believe I have excellent hearing.
Okay. Right.
I wasn't here. I have a statement, I read this to the Planning Commission, I'll provide it to everyone here, and it should be fairly brief. So, my name is Donald Garlit, G-A-R-L-I-T. I live on Shenandoah Circle. I'm here representing the residents of Shenandoah Circle. I'm a 38-year resident of Canton Township. So, this paper is to document RR, the people on Shenandoah Circle, strong opposition to the downgrading from RR to R1 of the present zoning of the property in question, with access to the Natural Beauty Road section, Ridge Road, and to provide the Township Board of Trustees with reasons for not approving the rezoning. So, a famous Civil War general once said, "One good reason is always enough." I'll give you 10 reasons. So, first off, a sale of property is not a compelling reason for rezoning property, as no underlying conditions are changed with the property's sale. In fact, changing a zoning classification solely to aid in a sale is the essence of an arbitrary and capricious decision, in my opinion. Secondly, placing more subdivisions in this area of the township will result in more traffic on the Natural Beauty Road, which will physically and environmentally degrade the area. There are only three miles of Natural Beauty Road in Wayne County, and they're all in northwest Canton. In fact, there are only 200 miles in the entire state. And the Natural Beauty Roads result in a special area loved by the residents, and are a major reason to live here. We can expect more road deterioration, and the road conditions are very bad. Supervisor Williams, I've never talked to you about it, I have talked to your predecessor numerous times. We have a very bad road situation. I know that's mostly up to Wayne County. There's a speed limit of 25 miles an hour, which is routinely violated by drivers going through the area. I will say the Canton Police Department makes efforts to enforce the speed limit. There are other areas of the township to be in to patrol, not just our area, but I have been out on Ridge Road, driving or walking. I've seen three tickets given in 15 minutes. That's how much they speed through that area. And it creates, that speeding creates a problem for people walking and biking along the road, as well as wildlife. I personally do not understand why the wants of a developer, that is an out-of-state corporation, I'm not sure who the developer is, I've never been told definitely, but I believe the developer is headquartered in Atlanta, Georgia. Why should they dominate over the wishes of the citizens, taxpayers, voters, and residents of the area? Property development is a one-time event while the residents are committed to the area. I'm a 38-year resident of Canton. One of my neighbors on Shenandoah Circle was brought from the hospital to Canton in the 1940s, still lives here. Canton needs to recognize the value of green belts and foliage if it wants to be a leading community. Rezoning to permit more development negates that. Another subdivision will result in more subdivision laws with increased use of chemicals in the area, most of the people in that section of the township. And I really am hesitant, when I said most, a good portion are on wells and septic fields. I am, everyone on our street is. So, anything that gets in that water, in the ground, that's just a bad idea. A proposal for a zoning change in more houses in a subdivision does not take a holistic view of the burden on the township and area. So, more houses result in more infrastructure, more policing, more road maintenance, increased fire department requirements, more school requirements. That's going to be borne by all the taxpayers. And I'm sure the developer will not be paying for more teachers, nor for the other services. And I will tell you, the electric grid in the area is already overburdened. I know some of these things are outside your purview, but when I spoke to the Planning Commission two weeks ago, I could look out my office window, and there are DTE workers and vehicles on Cherokee Circle. That grid is in very bad shape. The Planning Commission approved the rezoning without even requiring a site plan detailing the proposed land use, and that would seem to be the very essence of an arbitrary and capricious decision. In fact, the citizens were told by the Planning Commission that per the potential developer, no site plan even exists. How can the township officials exercise due diligence in reviewing a rezoning request if they don't even have access to the site plan? Moreover, developer representatives did not even speak at the Planning Commission meeting. I found that very unusual. And I will say, as an aside, we had a public comment period, maybe 10 people came and spoke. Then the Planning Commission spoke against our comments, attacked in some cases, made statements, and when one of the citizens of the township objected to one of the comments, we were told, oh, public comment period is over. That strikes me as totally undemocratic. It's just disrespectful. And we are not considering the impact on wildlife and their possible displacement, which needs to be considered. So, I don't think anyone is suggesting that the property can't be sold, we're merely requesting that there be no change to zoning in our area, so it can retain its natural beauty and character. A potential sale is not a compelling reason to change the zoning classification. And to reiterate, in the words of that old Civil War general, "One good reason is always enough." And I provided many good reasons to deny the requested change. And I'll provide this paper to each one of you, and anyone over here who might want it.
Sir, if you'd just hand it to Ann Marie, she'll go ahead and pass it down along the line for you. And the clerk will keep extra copies.
What's that?
The clerk will keep an extra copy for staff, so we're set there.
Let me know if you have enough. I got one last time. I think we have.
Okay, and if he doesn't have enough, oh, you know, I'll survive.
Thank you. I think I'm loud enough now. I can hear myself coming back at me. Would you like to speak, sir?
Good evening. I'm Mike Knowles with Diff and Umlor, representing the applicant, Polte Homes of Michigan, for this property. I also spoke at the Plan Commission meeting earlier this month. The property is currently zoned RR, and consistent with the master plan, we're rezoning it to R1. It's surrounded by properties all around it that are also R1. As you know, the master plan has been developed by this body and the Plan Commission for many years, with many opportunities for public input. As always, we welcome public input into our plans, and though a plan was not presented for review, that's because this is a rezoning of one piece of the four pieces of property that we will be presenting through the normal site planning process. Tonight, we're seeking your support to rezone this property, so that we can move that process forward, and have ample opportunity to review the site plan through the normal process. Polte Homes is planning on presenting 36 homes, one to the acre. It's about a 37-acre assembly with the four properties. So they'll be presenting 36 homes, they'll be a minimum 100-foot wide, 180 feet deep, 18,000 square feet, consistent with the R1 zoning. This property has some wonderful natural features on it. There are some beautiful stands of old trees, there are some wetlands, and we've done several iterations of site plans to minimize the impacts and enhance those natural features. We did meet with several of the neighbors at the Planning Commission meeting after the meeting ended. We met out in the hall, I passed out my business cards and got to know some of the neighbors, and they invited me by to share more of what our plans are. So I did visit with Mr. and Mrs. Rowe, north of the property, great people. I got to meet their llamas, and some of the chickens and roosters out there. And we did walk the property line, and they expressed what they would like to see along the property line, where they would like to see landscape enhancements, some of the trees they desired to see that we saved and preserved when we bring our plan forward. I think we're going to be able to accomplish all of that in the plan we're going to bring forward. As you heard, the Natural Beauty Road is of much concern to the surrounding residents, and it is a very beautiful road. I went down and took pictures all along the road, and put together a little plan that I could share with the neighbors, showing exactly the impact that we would have on the Natural Beauty Road. One thing you should know is that there are about 1,600 existing trees that meet the tree tagging, the tree survey requirements of Canton Township on the site. In the road right-of-way, there are four trees that are proposed for removal. So out of the 1,600, there's four in the road right-of-way. In addition to that, there are obviously more trees that will be coming down in our proposal, but we have done our calculations on tree replacements, and we plan to enhance the entry feature and the frontage along Ridge Road, so that it'll become even more beautiful than it currently is. One of the things that you'll notice in this Natural Beauty Road is that about the first 700 feet of the road doesn't have any trees along the road. It gets really fantastic once you get deeper north of Warren Road, with the cemetery and some fantastic canopy back through there. We won't be impacting any of that. Our entrance is going to be located approximately 350 feet north of Warren Road, where there's, like I said, it's devoid of vegetation. That's where the entry feature will go, that's where the replacement trees will be going, along with some of the other property lines, to add additional buffers. So, I think when you have the opportunity to review the site plan, it's something that I hope that you will endorse. I think you're going to like what you see. And again, tonight, we're here to convert the 14 acres, just under 15 acres, from the existing RR zoning to the master plan designation of the, with the R1 rezoning. Thank you very much.
Is there any other entrance or exit only on Ridge Road?
Yes, so our main entrance will be 350 feet north of Warren. There is an existing driveway for the Krupp property that you can see, it looks like that little knob, thank you, Jeff, sticking out right there. That's going to become an emergency access-only entrance. It's required for fire and police safety, but it will not be an active entrance or exit for the subdivision itself. Yes, ma'am?
Real quick, I know we're talking about 14.75 acres, but what's the total amount of acreage?
The total acreage is just over 37 gross acres. It nets out, when you take out, you're required to take out the road right-of-way on Ridge and Warren Road, so it nets out just over 36, and so we'll be planning one unit to the acre, 36 units.
Go ahead, Steve.
So, over the last six years, I've expressed a lot of frustration over the process of development in our community, and the fact that we have such great crowding in our community, especially on our roads. So, over that time, I've also been educated, quite often, to the fact that boards like ours have little power to stop such development in our community. In fact, I think it's one of the other corners at Ridge and Warren, that before my time, there was a lawsuit against the township and a consent agreement to build a neighborhood, and then also transfer the land that ended up becoming the apartments at Ridge and Ford Road. So, the courts have not, over time, ruled in the favor of townships or municipalities like ours. That's very frustrating to me. So at the same time, I've learned that the best thing to do, that we can do, is work with developers to ensure that what they develop meets the needs of our community. One thing I'll be looking for in a site plan is something, and I'm currently looking at a satellite view of the area, is the development directly to the west seems to have been built into the woods, without removing a lot of the forestation that was there. And so what you described sounds like that, and I'll be very interested to see it. Hopefully, the Natural Beauty Road, I, we've worked with you before, I expect that you'll respect that, and also want the same things for the community. As far as I'm concerned, that's sort of the best we can do for our community right now, is to make sure we're all on top of ensuring that what trees are there, as much as possible, remain, that we don't affect the roads as much as possible, and make it something great for our community.
Sir?
Just to clarify for the residents, we get another look at this when the site plan comes up, so this, we'll be able to take a look at this again, but this is consistent with the master plan, this rezoning, so. with the master plan, this rezoning, so...
Meet with the residents before you bring it to us.
We do. I was passing out my business cards. It has my cellphone number on it. I'm not afraid to sit down with folks and listen to what their concerns are and try to shape our plans so that we can make as many people happy as possible.
Yeah, I just want to thank Trustee Snyderman for his comments especially. I don't know how many times I've had residents complain to me about the apartments that have gone in at Ridge and Ford Road. They're right next to a school. They're not consistent with our master plan. They're not consistent with our future land use, and the reason that they're there is because of a judge. Because of a judge. Because we have to follow the Zoning and Enabling Act in Michigan, and that is a very, very strict document that gives private property owners a substantial amount of rights. And what I see here is that this is consistent with the future land use map. I do see that it is consistent with the surrounding zoning. There are only little pockets of rural residential that this body and the previous body have built into the future plan to go to R1 as it is. So, to that end, as I said before, to protect the township from unneeded litigation and from our zoning ordinance being thrown out in the future and having potentially other potential developments that aren't consistent with this document or any of our documents, I would be in favor of this rezoning, and we do get an opportunity to look at the site plan. I think it is important to talk about, you know, we do have in place our tree ordinance, which does allow for the maintenance of vegetation, and it's very important that we have that, and we are currently fighting to maintain that ordinance in the courts, because that has been subject to litigation as well, for the same premise, right? Property rights, telling people what they can and cannot do on their own property. That is something that has allowed us to try to maintain Canton's culture, Canton's green spaces, Canton's wildlife in a reasonable fashion, and I think that it would be reasonable to support the rezoning.
No additional board comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Second motion?
All right. Mr. Supervisor, I moved a table for consideration, the amendment for a second reading on February 12th, 2019.
Support.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G3, consider approval of special land use for a group daycare Tara's toddler time. And Ms. Towler, are you with us? Yes, okay, thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, one moment. My PDF document is... I move that the board adopt the following resolution for the approval of special land use for a group daycare home, Tara's Toddler Time. Whereas, the project sponsor, Tara Toddler, has requested special land use approval for a group daycare home at 7060 Epping Drive, located in the Willshere subdivision, and whereas, the Planning Commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria and voted eight to zero to recommend approval, subject to the hours of operation as provided in the application of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and further subject to meeting all of the requirements of Michigan Compiled Laws 125.3205 and obtaining any applicable building permits for interior alterations, as may be required for the use and state license. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request for a group daycare home for Tara's Toddler Time at 7060 Epping Drive on the tax parcel listed, subject to hours of operation as provided in the application of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and further subject to meeting all of the requirements of MCL 125.3205 and obtaining any application building permits for interior alterations, as may be required for the use and state license.
Support.
In terms of summary beyond what Michael's just stated, you currently have a license with the state for six children. You want to increase that to 12. That's basically the premise. And I don't, Trustee Snyderman, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I had previously asked the supervisor to ask a couple of questions. If you don't mind, would you? Yeah, thank you. First, Mr. Gulay, one question I had was, do the neighbors get notified of the change?
Yes, all the neighbors within 300 feet were notified, and I think Ms. Towler, you know, has spoken directly with all of her direct neighbors.
Were there any concerns or issues that were reported back?
Received no letters of opposition, nor did anybody attend the public hearing.
And really, the only other question I have was, sort of after this process, was, I know my children were in home daycare when they were younger, and I knew there was a limit of six children. I think I remember it was only two of which could have been under 18 months or something like that at the time. This was years ago, so it may have changed. But when you go to 12, do you have to add additional staff, or does the state permit you solely to watch all 12?
My mother moved in with me about a year ago, so she helps me now, but yeah, there's a ratio of one to six, and it's still...
So it's still one to six? Okay, so you will have a second person at all times included? That was it, so, thank you.
Go ahead, Anne Marie.
There was a question of traffic too, and you had said that people would be pulling in your driveway, so they wouldn't be blocking traffic also. So, no, yeah, like Jeff said, nobody had appeared, and he hadn't heard anything, and so we approved it.
This is the necessary first step for you to apply for your license from the state, correct?
For a group, correct. They just need the zoning...
Yeah, what she'll do is, once you approve the special land use, she has forms that I have to sign on behalf of the township, saying that she's received approval of the group daycare from the township.
No further questions, comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Consider award of contract for the 2019 U.S. FS Tree Planning Program to Cremboli Nursery.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a contract for the 2019 U.S. Forest Service Tree Planning Program to Cremboli Nursery Incorporated for a total amount not to exceed $24,000.
Support.
Planning Services received six qualified bids for 2019 U.S. Forest Service Tree Planting Project for Patriot Park. The lowest qualified bidder was Cremboli Nursery Local, and we're here to approve that agreement. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G5. Consider approval of purchase of vehicles for 2019...
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of 19 vehicles totaling $660,903, as depicted in the attached spreadsheet.
Support.
Municipal Services Division Fleet Services evaluates all vehicles that meet the minimum replacement criteria each year and recommends replacement as part of the capital improvement program process. This year, 19 vehicles are budgeted for replacement and/or to meet the service needs of the various users. The On Street Vehicle Fleet has 171 total units. The township will again utilize existing publicly bid governing pricing contracts administered through Oakland County for all GMC purchases, and in the Macomb County system for all Ford purchases, and the Rochester Hills Co-op for Freightliner, Naphide, and Truck and Trailer Specialty for Dump and Truck Bodies. The units taken out of service will be rotated elsewhere in the fleet or be auctioned off using our online auction site, Bidcorp.com, for disposal. The total value again for 2019 is $660,903. Each unit has adequate funds budgeted in the respective department budgets. And then again, there's a list here. Are there any questions? We kind of do this once a year at the beginning of the year. Anne Marie, please.
Did you use any of the Volkswagen funds, the Dieselgate funds, for replacement? So Tim said he was going to look at that before he left.
I'm not sure. I'm not familiar with the requests that would be from Fleet.
Yeah, I think how we were approaching those grants were for the possibility of electrical vehicle charging stations.
You can also use them for cleaner diesel vehicles. So if you're replacing an older diesel vehicle with a newer one, you can get some funds, and the state should have the applications now. They released their draft mitigation plan, so I would check into that. So basically, it's all across the country, and each state's given so much money, and it could be electric vehicle or a newer diesel vehicle.
Certainly something we can look into and will take advantage of.
I do know that, and I'm not sure if that is the one, but Tim Foss had Clark and Deputy Director Stockline look into that for the fire truck we purchased last year, and it did not apply to that. I'm not sure if that's the right one or not.
These are new funds based on the settlement with Volkswagen, so it's a developing thing or has been developing, and if it's matured to the point that we can apply, then certainly, Greg, maybe you can have your team take a look for us.
That's pretty much where Director Foss and I had left it off, that we were following up with the applications that were available at the time and what would qualify, and nothing to that point did, but he was looking into it, so I can follow up with Clark as well between all the directors. We can work with Clark to find where that was left off. I know he was kind of taking the lead for Director Foss.
I will certainly send Clark a email in the morning to do just that. Okay, thank you, Anne Marie. All right, so any other questions, comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G6. Consider purchase of water meters and metering control vices for 2019.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the quote from Aetna Supply Company and approve a purchase order not to exceed $1,012,420 and authorize the Public Works Division to purchase the necessary meter equipment and supplies. I further move to waive the finance purchasing policy, requiring formal bids, as these items are supplied under a sole source contract through the Aetna Supply Company.
Support.
Good, this is, once a year, we go through and we buy an inventory of MXU devices, meters, to be placed throughout the community. Based on the conversation we had at a staff meeting this morning, I think Bob said about 400 or so would be for new construction, and the rest would be for replacement. So, let's see, it's that time of the year to buy more meters. Any additional comments, questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G7. Consider approval and award of purchase order contract to Fessler Bowman to remove and replace concrete pavement at the Canton Public Works Facility.
Mr. Supervisor, this is in the form of two motions. I move to authorize a budget amendment as follows. Increase expense to the water capital outlet infrastructure account in the amount of $290,538. Increase expense in the sewer capital outlet infrastructure account in the amount of $290,538, and a decrease expense to the transfer to fund balance for a total of $581,076.
In summary, the background is, if we bend out to your public works facilities here in Canton, the cement is failing. I think it was originally installed in 2002, a lot of heavy truck traffic through that area. Six bids were received. NCI and Fessler Bowman of Flushing, Michigan were the qualified lowest bidder. In 2018, water and sewer rate calculations, many capital items purchased included the rates, including $200,000 for DPW payment replacement. The other capital items in those calculations also came in lower than anticipated, which resulted in inadequate fund reserve in the amounts to cover the complete pavement project that's being proposed here this evening. Are there any board questions, comments? This is replacing the cement at the public... Okay. Seeing none, those in favor of the first motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a purchase order contract to Fessler Bowman in an amount of $528,249.75, plus a 10% contingency of $52,825, for a total not to exceed amount
Support.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G8, request board approval of 2019 blanket purchase orders.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the 2019 purchase orders as attached.
Good. Blanket orders, this is again the maintenance, routine maintenance we do each year. Oh, sorry, support?
I got it.
Thank you, Diane. It's a routine function we're doing this evening again for blanket orders that'll be processed during the calendar year. Per Canton's purchasing policy F10, blanket purchase orders will not be issued in excess of $30,000, nor will a single purchase in excess of $1,000 be approved without board's approval. So this allows our teams to do the small buying throughout the year. That is required to keep things going smoothly.
Yes, to clarify...
Go ahead, Steve.
So, in this list, though, there are items that are greater than $30,000. Is that what, are we approving those items that are greater?
Correct. All the items on here, if they're over $30,000, they have to come to the board, and if they're under $30,000, we're expecting that there could be a purchase over $1,000. So that's why, because a single purchase within that purchase order might be over $1,000.
If you look at the list, it's a lot of maintenance items, vehicle repair, landscaping items, so mostly just general maintenance and repair items.
I added the mailroom copier, because the individual monthly bills tend to be over $1,000. And so this is a lot easier for me than having to go to the board and having to wait to pay on our maintenance agreement, you know, contract, because oftentimes, we have two to three weeks between board meetings.
No further comment? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That was one motion there. Item G9. Consider approval of actuarial valuation of the Charter Township of Canton retiree healthcare plan.
Mr. Supervisor, I hereby move to approve the proposal from CBIZ Retirement Plan Services to provide an actuarial valuation of the retiree healthcare benefits for a not-to-exceed fee of $20,250, and to authorize the Finance Director to sign the acceptance of letter of engagement.
Support.
And I'll give you the short version here, is in order to, the legislature modified Public Act 202 of 2017, which of course is basically driving us to do a separate and distinct valuation of these retiree healthcare plans to be aligned with everybody else across the state. So it's an incremental cost to us that we don't have a whole lot of choice in completing. Does anybody have any additional questions or comments? Please state.
When would we get the results?
Oh, typically, we would do this later on in the year, so this is our biannual valuation. However, because of Public Act 202 of 2017, the state of Michigan is requiring different actuarial assumptions than we would typically get from our normal actuary that we have to do in compliance with GASB for our accounting purposes. So the state's trying to get a kind of a pooling of all municipalities in the state with all the same assumptions to kind of see where people's funded status is, to kind of compare apples to apples. So that's the additional, and that is due to be filed by June 30th, so we have to push this up. So we should be getting this, I would say, May.
Will this replace our biannual one, or we'll still do that?
Oh, no, this is in addition. This is in addition to. That's why, the cost is held flat from our evaluation from two years ago. However, the increase in cost is because we have to have two different sets of assumptions, one that the state's requiring and one that we are required to for our annual audit.
May.
Well, to that end, why couldn't we tell our auditors, because we're being forced to do this to the state, we don't want to pay twice?
Because...
Will they accept?
Because the auditor says we have to use the assumptions that actually match our plan. We have to use the interest rate based on what our actual earnings are, not what the state's telling us our earnings would, should be.
Again, legislature is helping us...
Based on our actual experience.
...manage our business. Okay. I'm sorry, Summer?
No, it's fine. I think I already know the answer to this, but since the state is requiring this, are they giving us any money towards this fee?
No, it's an unfunded liability.
That was my point.
May I ask why you're requesting to have... May I ask why you're requesting to have you sign as opposed to the supervisor?
That's just how it has traditionally been done. If you prefer to have the supervisor sign it, that is absolutely okay.
No worries.
Comments, questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Out of jail with the, our legislators. G 10, consider approval of access control system alarm system at Canton Human Services Building.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase from Interstate Security at 51233 Oro Drive in Shelby Township, Michigan, 48315 for the installation of an alarm and access control system for the Canton Human Services Building in the amount of $48,895 to be paid from Community Development Block Grant account number listed.
Late 2018, a thorough security survey was completed. As a result, security mirrors and upgraded lighting have already been installed by township staff. Access control and upgraded security system have shown to be a necessity. Interstate Security, the preferred vendor for the township, was contacted and a quote obtained to replace and upgrade the existing alarm system and to install access control system for the building. This will be done in a cost of, as presented here, $48,895, which will be paid for with federal community development block grant funds. And Greg, I think you said that we've got some new tenants possibly coming in? Or did I misinterpret what was being discussed today?
Don't believe so, no. No, that was upgraded office furniture that we received from the library, that we took some out there and some to the summit.
Mail that I was supposed to send this morning and did not. Thank you for reminding me. I will send Eva Davis a thank you note. Got it. Very good. Any board questions, comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G 11. Consider approval of a contract for general paving rehabilitation.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and award the contract for the general paving rehabilitation project to S&amp;J Asphalt Company at 39571 Michigan Avenue in Canton, Michigan, 48188 for $150,000, with funds to be paid from the account number listed for capital outlay buildings and improvements.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. The township owns and operates multiple parking areas, roadways, and paths. The conditions of these paved areas range from good to poor. Many of the areas have large potholes, cracks, conditions that contribute to the accelerated deterioration of the surface. In an effort to complete spot repairs and necessary routine maintenance to extend the life of the paved services at specific areas throughout the township, a specific specification was designed to include pothole filling, pavement repair, crack sealing, seal coating, and restryping, which is covered in this agreement. Are there any questions, comments?
I would just say it's appropriate to do, in my opinion. We just bid this less than a year ago, so I don't think the prices have changed too much. Probably went up.
Anything, they're going up, yes.
Fair with that?
No further questions or comments. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Item G 12, consider approval of an intergovernmental, intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township for the construction of a historic Ford plant pathway trail and authorized budget amendment.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve accepting $262,700 in a transportation alternative program grant through the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, or SEMCOG, for the construction of historic Ford plant pathway trail at Cherry Hill West of Ridge Pathway. There's going to be two motions, I apologize.
June 2017, Canton entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for the construction for the Ford historic pathway on Cherry Hill West of Ridge. The pathway will connect the subdivisions to the west to Cherry Hill Village District. Further, in 2017, the Canton Board, we authorized expending the $210,000 for our portion of the project. The original budget projection for the project totaled $412,716, which included a 10% contingency as well as engineering expenses. Canton was to fund the $210,000 of this with balance funded with the TAP grant dollars through the Southeastern Michigan Council of Government, SEMCOG, in the amount of $202,700. Once the project was bid, costs came in much higher than anticipated with a total cost of $472. To continue with the project, staff worked with SEMCOG to secure additional $60,000 to fund the project, which will now be split, $210,000 funded by Canton and $260,000, $62,700 funded by the TAP grant through SEMCOG. We're requesting authorization to accept the increased grant funds and to further authorize the budget amendment to pay for our portion of the project as shown here. Are there any board questions or comments? I don't know if you guys remember doing it '17. So the long story short is, the original numbers came in from the state way too high. We asked them to rebid. They took some cost out. Still not enough cost out. Greg, Director Holenberger went to SEMCOG and said, hey, guys, this is not a feasible program. Can you help us? And they delivered the full asking price that Director Holenberger went in with, so. Well done, Greg. Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I further authorize, or move to authorize, the Finance Department to make necessary budget adjustments to record grant funds and the related expenditures listed below.
October 2018, the Board of Trustees approved an RBA authorizing for the contract of Phase Two architectural. Oh, did I, did I skip past? I'm sorry.
Great, we just have to vote.
Pretty good, right. Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I will jump into G 13, request approved, approval of a 2019 fire budget amendment for architectural services.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the below-listed budget amendment to the 2019 fire budget to accommodate the remainder of the 2018 board-approved contract for Phase Two of the architectural services for Fire Station Number Two.
Second.
Okay, in October 2018, the Board of Trustees approved an RBA authorizing the contract for Phase Two architectural services for Fire Station Number Two, and an associated budget amendment to utilize fire fund balance in the amount of $340,659. Due to only a small portion of the funds being expensed in 2018, we're requesting to amend the '29 budget for the remaining balance of the contract in the amount of $317,446. This is a budgetary request only, and the contract remains in place as approved last fall. So what we are doing is simply an accounting cleanup of the books, nothing more today. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And I believe that concludes, oh, we've got a G 14. Consider request to upgrade the current 911 dispatch system.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the upgrade purchase of the West 911 dispatch system from West Safety Solutions Corporation in the amount of $255,550.06, utilizing funds budgeted in the 2019 E911 fund.
Preparation for compliance to the next gen 911, 911, going into effect this year, we are requesting to do an upgrade throughout our current 911 dispatch system, upgrading the system as time is recommended by PSDIT as being the most cost-effective and least interruptive to the agency. West formerly Entrado is quoting the upgrade of four workstations, adding a fifth station for supervisor, and includes a five-year service and maintenance coverage for a total amount of $255,550.06. Funds for this purchase are budgeted in the E911 account. Are there any questions for Josh? Josh, anything you'd like to add? Because this is, again, the technology, or the state is requiring that we upgrade for.
Yeah, this will basically replace the hardware and software that sits on the dispatcher's dispatch council. And then there's further work that's going on in conjunction with Conference Western Wayne in, in terms of the trunk lines and things like that coming in. But what, what we have right now is a bifurcated system. We have our Entrado system, which, which if you dial 911 on a phone, cell phone or landline, it comes in through one system. If you send a text message to 911, it's coming in on another system. The upgrades will allow it all to be put onto one system and allow for future, as they roll out the different phases of next gen 911, which would not only allow for text to 911, but it would allow data and pictures and other type of information to be sent via 911. So that stuff will come online at a later date. But this is preemptive to get us up to speed and allow us to put that software and that, that information onto the system.
Three-by-five cards are a thing of the past, John, I'm sorry.
Better than.
Any questions, comments from the board? I'm sorry.
Are you saying you bet? I said, yeah, when the electric grid goes down, what do we do then?
Three-by-five cards and electric cars.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Josh, I think I need one of those red, green, yellow lights for when I'm going through the board packet tonight. Stop, slow down, start. Okay, that concludes our formal board agenda this evening. Is there any board comment?
Yes, there, so we had something at the back of the room, Treasurer Slavens, Diane, and it said, Wayne County Treasurer offers federal workers furloughed by government shutdown extension to pay delinquent property taxes. So people, I don't know how many.
Yeah, and they, they would have to contact the Wayne County Treasurer's office.
Oh, is that?
I have in the back for anybody who's.
Is that only if they have delinquent property taxes? Or any federal workers that are furloughed should contact the Wayne County Treasurer? Okay. Okay, thanks. That's good to know.
Learned today from Treasurer Slavens that once the county taxes, or property taxes go late, then it automatically, they flow directly through the county, not through our organization. So, point of clarification. Very good. All right, additional comments? Call for a motion to adjourn. Second. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you.